Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. If you all are out in the breezeway and would like to participate in the forum, we ask that you make your way into the auditorium. We are about to get started. My name is Deborah Tough. I'm Gwinnett County spokeswoman, and we want to welcome you to the Mental Health and Me District 3 Forum. Y'all could have been anywhere right now. It's not easy coming out on a Saturday, muggy morning, but you all are here. Commissioner Watkins is so grateful. It's not a light matter. Whether you're joining us in person here at GJAC, as we call it, which is the Gwinnett Justice and Administration Center, or watching us live on Facebook. This morning is about creating a safe space for our young folks to share openly and for all of us to listen, learn, and take action. This forum comes at a very important time. School just started, right ahead of Suicide Prevention Month in September as well, reminding us that mental health conversations can't wait. Now, before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the incredible folks and organizations who have made this conversation possible. And please hold for the applause until I'm finished. Our host and moderator for today, District 3 Commissioner Jasper Watkins III. Our youth panelists, and just wave your hands, and if I butcher your name, I'm so sorry. It blamed my head and not my heart. We have Ms. Kalea Nelson with M3 Youth, Many Minds Matter. We have Taiwo Grace Adibayo with the Guide Youth Advisory Board. We have Nehemiah Hamilton with the District 3 Youth Commissioner with GYC. Our youth subject matter experts, we have Iliana Palacio with also the Gwinnett Youth Commission Vice Chair. Lauren Lewis could not be with us today. We have Amanda Alguereke, okay? Cory Moore. Our adult subject matter experts, we have Ms. Amira Abdalafid, the Guide Program Director, also of suicide or suicide prevention. Monique Jackson with M3 Youth, Many Minds Matter. Desiree Mitchell with Hope Dealer Outreach. Dr. Shannon Hervey with the Gwinnett Coalition. Irene Batista Lopez with Viewpoint Health. And we are also honored to have with us Dr. Parker, who's the Executive Director of Student Services for Gwinnett Public Schools. We also have our Mental Health Task Force from GSU in the house. We also have our BHU Behavioral Health Unit with Gwinnett Police. We have Officer Voss and Victoria Chan. And we also have our resource tables from Guide, Inc., Gwinnett Coalition, Hope Dealer Outreach, Viewpoint Health, Live Healthy Gwinnett, and of course, the Mental Health Task Force. And without further ado, we're going to get this started and how the flow is, we're going to watch an episode of our docu-series Upfront Gwinnett, specifically Episode 2, which is called Their Path Forward, I believe, from our Suffering in Silence series, followed by the panel discussion and then the question and answer session. If you have a question, please do one question, and we want to get to everybody else, and then we'll come back to you if it's necessary. So without further ado, let's get this party started. I'm Deborah Tough. Thank you for watching Episode 2 of Upfront Gwinnett: Suffering in Silence, where we are shining a spotlight on mental health in our county. Our focus right now brings us to a surprising location, the Gwinnett County Jail. But it's not surprising to jailers, senior staff, or even the Gwinnett County Sheriff himself, Kivo Taylor, who says the jail has become the state's largest mental health facility. But why is that the case? Corrections, right here in the county, has also seen a notable increase in residents who are requiring mental health care. Here's how leaders in both facilities are navigating this very complex issue and pushing for progress.
Progress to me taking office? Let me say it this way. We were close to $13 million worth of lawsuits that the county had to pay out and settle for excessive force cases. That was what I walked into.
The trends that we've noticed are starting to become more violent. They are isolated from social network. If you don't pay attention to the signs, someone that may be dealing with mental health could be very suicidal.
For several months, we investigated. You once told me that Gwinnett County Jail is the largest mental health facility in the state. How does that impact staff?
But I think all of the sheriff's officers are experiencing an uptick in the number of people that are coming into their facilities. Once they're here, there's no movement to get them placed where they actually need to be placed. So it is a significant drain on our resources.
And a significant drain on staff and recruitment. Sheriff's Office Chief Cleo Atwater says jailers are being tasked with the job of a social worker or licensed mental health clinician.
In our facility, right now, we have a daily inmate population of about, just shy of 2,200. Fifty percent of our daily inmate population are mental health services consumers. And that goes from counseling all the way to receiving psychotropic medications. You go from just making sure somebody's safe to preventing self-harming behavior.
Sometimes, you know, a deputy or a jailer may get assaulted. We're trying to make sure that people understand that the training process is ongoing. Just because it worked, and it was a good training piece yesterday, doesn't mean that that's what's going to work today. We don't have the same level of resources that they would if they were in a state hospital.
But state hospitals are no more. In 1999, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that mental health hospitals would shutter to better integrate patients into society. The overhaul forced Georgia to reinvent the wheel and build a new system from the bottom up. Is it working?
Couple of years ago, we did increase our mental health counselors hours.
Department of Corrections Warden Daryl Johnson has served the county for decades. He says the demand for service and support continues to grow.
We have a 40-hour mental health counselor that is here that can constantly and continuously monitor these individuals.
The sheriff's office introduced its Mental Health Task Force in 2021 to help monitor and advocate for those experiencing a crisis.
A lot of times when crimes are committed, they are committed by people who are going through these crises. So it becomes a holding tank here of people that are coming in, and the judges have to make a decision one way or the other.
This type of setup is for someone that is acute and suffering from a mental health crisis. So if they're needing food, if they're needing something, it can be delivered through here. Because once you open this door all the way, you don't know what's going to happen.
The need for resources goes beyond the walls of these facilities.
Once they leave this environment, then we try to direct them to a place like Viewpoint, an organization out in the community where they can go and ask for help.
Sometimes their mental breakdown may be because they feel hopeless. Because we're also partnering with other stakeholders out here, so that once that person is out, that we're providing them with an avenue to continue to get the services outside.
A goal slowly being accomplished, though a heavy burden to bear, as one officials are willing to push for progress. Recently, the jail received a perfect score from the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. That means they got a 100 for how they treat their residents who require medical care. The jail has also dedicated several units for those folks who are residents and experiencing a mental health crisis. Coming up next on Upfront Gwinnett: Suffering in Silence.
A lot of times, public safety members do not want to talk. They're more apt to talk to somebody who understands them, who have experienced a similar incidence that they've responded to.
Until then, I'm Deborah Tough. See you next time. If you or a loved one are experiencing a crisis and need immediate assistance, call 988 to speak with a mental health professional, or call 911 for law enforcement assistance.
Well, good morning, everyone. And I want to thank you all for joining me here for this occasion with this topic, Mental Health and Me. I can tell you that in my day job, I'm the District 3 Commissioner for Gwinnett County. In my day job, I'm a pharmaceutical consultant. I'm a pharmacist by trade, nuclear pharmacy in particular. But I have a contract with the state of Minnesota where I go to all the southeastern states, and that is the Carolinas, Kentucky, portions of Tennessee, Alabama, Georgia, and Florida. And I've been in every mental health facility in the southeast, because part of what I do is go inside and talk to them about their meds. In particular, that a lot of these mental health facilities, they get a finite amount of money that they have to use for a fiscal year. And what I do is I go in as their pharmacy consultant and show them how they can buy more drug with less money. But what I've noticed, since I've been doing this since 2013, the increase in psychotropic medication, that's almost two-thirds of everyone's budget. And that's pretty much everywhere. Since a lot of the college students have gotten into this, where they take Adderall and others to study, what we have now is a bunch of young adults that are coming out into the workforce detoxing. Isn't that something? They take those drugs for four to five years, and some even into their graduate years. So you've got an individual that's 27 detoxing, that's at a high level educationally, but they're working with very sensitive equipment and very sensitive, actually with people's lives. So when I saw that and saw the gaps here, I said, you know what? In Gwinnett County, we're doing, but I like to use the phrase that we could always do better. And I think that's where this comes from. Because mental health, for so long, has been an individual issue, but now it's become a community priority. No longer can we point the finger and, you know, you get the thumb pointing back at you. No longer can you look at someone young, at four or five, and say, oh, they'll grow out of it. No, they don't grow out of it. When I was doing recruiting in the military, it was like, I want my son to come to the military, or my daughter, so it can make them a man or a woman, and they can learn responsibility. I said, no. If he comes, or she comes in this week, this way, all we're going to do is show them how to kill this way. They never really get out of what you were concerned about. We just show them how to do it better, you know? Because we're basically training them to go forward, not training them to fix a problem that they had in the past. And so often, those individual recruits, they won't last that 13 to 14 weeks in basic training, because you see it very quick, that there's a problem. And there's, the drill sergeants and such, they go through that. But I wanted to bring that back to the county level, where we can start working with people. This is why I said it was so important to bring in our youth leaders. Because, see, we see them, but we really don't listen to them. And I think that's a problem, and they get it. Because everything, what they do, we say, it's not good. I know, because I have a 19-year-old grandson that tells me that all the time. You know, he puts me on the tiki-taka and all this kind of stuff, and then he bans me. You know, it's like, you know, you want me to do this, and then I come to your thing, and you ban me. What's that? But it's like, this is where the conversation has to start. Because what they're telling you and what you're here today is what they hear. So they're hearing individuals suffering in silence, because they're not talking to us about it. Because we really don't want to hear it. You know, it's like, get over it, pull your bootstraps up. I went through it. I walked two miles to school. No, I didn't. I had a bus. I did not walk two miles to school, or shiver, or didn't have shoes. No, that's old stories. Now there are new stories. But we have such great organizations here in Gwinnett County. We have like Hope Dealer Outreach. They have engaged with more than 150 youth. They've distributed over 200 naloxone kits, that's for if you have an event, and 500 fentanyl test strips, giving young people and their families these tools. I know a lot of people, even as a pharmacist, we say, well, you know, is that giving them naloxone, or is giving them the fentanyl test strip fixing the problem? No, it's addressing that there is a problem, and now we have an avenue in which we can work in. And I think that's how we need to start seeing it. And also, they've led, the Hope Dealer Outreach have led to 10 harm reduction workshops. So this education piece that we're getting from our nonprofit coalitions are making a difference. Then we look at Guide, Inc. Since 2019, they've trained more than 4,000 residents in suicide prevention and youth mental health first aid. They've worked with our fire departments, they've worked with our police department, they're over, and they have over 200 Gwinnett County school staff that are part of this as well. They've distributed, and this is what's so great about it, over 30,000 mental health resources throughout the community. You see all these good things that we have, that we have in all these beautiful silos, but we're looking for this big pasture of everybody coming together and their synergy, and we can punch this with one hit. I know, I'm saying all these violent anecdotes. We could be, I grew up, and y'all come on now, y'all know, Bugs Bunny, everything was a hit. Y'all know. Okay, so it's showing that, basically, when you look at Guide, Inc., they say that there's been a decrease in the percentage of eighth and 12th graders considering self-harm than was in '22. However, they're still there. You know, sometimes they find a better way of repressing. And this is what we listen, this is what we want to hear. How are they coping with craziness, foolishness, things that they really can't manage if they could manage? You know, how do we work with them on that? And then we have the Gwinnett Coalition. Over nearly, they have provided over 600 training sessions to over 7,900 Gwinnett County residents across 11 sectors, and that is schools, nonprofits, law enforcement, faith community, faith communities, and more. They're trained on trauma, improving behavioral health, and building resilience. I mean, these are things that we look for in our organizations that we have out there. They're not just doing good work, and that's the reason why I wanted you to hear the numbers. Because I'm a data guy. It's not just the good work. They have numbers that show. And I think how we go forward is we need measurable results. We need to be able to take numbers and put them toward programs, and then effectively then address what grants are out there. So now we have a measurable way of saying, when we got this $4.3 million, we helped X amount of folks and started this. Not just to say, we got $4.5 million, and, okay, we started four new organizations, four new inks, four new LLCs, but we still got people that are suffering in silence. So I think today, what we want to get out of this is that, you know, let's listen, let's hear, and let's try to look at where are the possibilities in our community for engagement? Because if we don't meet these young folks at the crossroads, as they say, the tipping point, folks, is already here. Okay? The tipping point is already, let's be, let's be for real, it's already here. The things that frightened us back in the day, and I know I'll tell my age in this, but I gotta, I'll get a couple of smiles out of this. Remember when we used to have to get up under the chair because it may blow up tomorrow? Like, getting up under the chair was gonna stop whatever was gonna happen. We know that now, but, you know, back then, they blow the horn, you got under your desk. Nowadays, it's shooter people. I mean, it's people coming into the schools, and you kind of like gotta hunker down and barricade your door. Totally different world. You know, and I see it with my grans. Totally different world. So today, I hope we have an opportunity to listen. And let's leave here today, not with, this was just another good conversation. Let's leave here today with something that we're going to do that's measurable. Now, I know for my part, I have community services here, and I promised at the first one that we were going to create a dashboard whereby when you would come to the site, that dashboard, you can put in whatever your issue is, or whatever that problem was, and with all of these groups we got, it should be able to go right to where you want with some kind of AI intuitive model, and then you can get the help you need. Right now, the big thing to go to if you wanted to get that help is One Stop, our One Stops. I mean, we're the only people in the nation that have a network like we do, where there's no Gwinitian left behind here with those One Stops. And they have navigators that tell people directly where to go. And if you don't go, we have a helping hand. I'll put it like that. And finally, I like to say, you know, in that old attitude of, you know, you can make a person go to, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make it drink? Well, I'm just going to make the horse thirsty enough that when they do go to the water, they're going to drink. But let's give them the right stuff to drink. They may not all want water. They may want education. They may want resources. They just need, may need a pace to stay, you know, to get, just to get their heads right. You know how we adults say that? So let's look at that. And with that, I'm going to migrate over, and then we'll start the questions to the panelists. Y'all see that walk? Pretty cool, huh? I'm getting my walk. I mean, I'm getting it. Y'all know Deb's going to get me for this inner stuff, right? Y'all do know that. So let's start out with Ms. Nelson with Many Minds Matter. You've been a vocal advocate for youth and mental health. What inspired you to speak up, and why is it so important for young people to share their stories?
Well, thankfully, I was very grateful and very lucky to have a mom that was already very involved in mental health and very knowledgeable about it growing up. And she would take me to conferences all the time. And I remember, I was 12 years old, and I was sitting in the audience, and I was listening to teens that were older than me, younger than me, in my age, get up there and share their stories, talk about their fears, their dreams, their aspirations. And I was inspired, and I realized that I can do that too, that I should do that too, that these are conversations I should be having and thinking about and talking about with my friends. And I took that, and I went home, and I shared those things. And the most important part, I felt like for me, was not only just talking about and acknowledging that I have mental health, or I'm knowledgeable, and I know about it, but acknowledging and telling my friends, I have depression, I have anxiety. So it opens up that space for them to talk about it, so they're not scared to say, I also have anxiety, I also have depression, I also have whatever I may be dealing with. Or if they don't know the word for it, they start thinking about it. Then they go home, and they talk to their parents, and it just starts a snowball effect that can help for change. And I think that's the most important thing, is just talking about it and sharing your story with people. Thank you.
That's perfect. Which leads me into Mr. Hamilton. As a youth leader, how do you see mental health affecting your peers? And what kind of support do you think students really need from schools or adults?
Yeah, I think nowadays, a lot of us have really high expectations, especially with the way college applications look and us being expected to start really young. So, sorry about this, we, a lot of us have a lot of different leadership positions, and the leader does set the tone for the group that they're leading. So it's kind of hard to come out and say, hey, I'm feeling this way, I'm kind of struggling, and I need your help. So I think if we offered more mental health support to the people who are struggling and haven't already showed the larger signs, maybe they're just attending school less or oversleeping, we can offer them the support they need before they do something extreme like suicide or substance abuse.
Perfect, great. So you see already a pattern, you know? We're listening, and you can kind of, you see it, and you feel, I'm kind of feeling this way, you know, with adults. Everybody know their kids. Everybody know you got that son or daughter that twirls or does something, and you'll say, okay, this is, so-and-so has a problem, and I'm just going to see how long it takes for them to come out and say something to me. I mean, we all see those, but you hear that that is there. So when we live that, we'll look at like the peer impact and the life experience. So Ms. Abdelio?
Adibayo.
Adibayo, okay. I'm sorry. How do peer relationships impact your mental health, and how do you support friends who may be going through something silently?
I think peer relations impact my mental health constructively. And what I mean by that is that relationships are multifaceted, so they can be good or bad experiences. So when they are good experiences, I kind of let those good experiences become a community where I can foster a positive mental standing, especially when the peer relationships that are positive, they are beneficial, they make you feel better, especially when you're going through something. But when they are negative, because those things do happen inevitably, I kind of let it be a lesson. I kind of let it be testing, because when they're negative, I let my mental health not deteriorate, but learn how to navigate negative experiences in the future. Because you can't control that it went bad, but you can't control how you come out of it. And for friends, when they're going through something silently, the best thing you can do is to be there. You have to show up. You have to be consistent, because people don't always look for a voice of reason. They don't need you to give them logistics, oh, you need to do this and this. They just need you to be a safe space for them. So being consistent, showing up and being kind for them, can really help them when they're going through something silently. And speaking of silently, when your friends are going through something silently, don't be loud about it. Don't tell people about it. Of course, you can encourage them to tell somebody about it, but telling somebody else about it for them can be a double-edged sword. So it can lead them to more drastic courses of actions as a result of their privacy being disrespected. So being consistent and showing up for them is the best thing you can do for those people.
So for our other two panelists, let's stay right there for a sec. So what are, we're listening. So what are some of the emotional challenges teens are facing right now? I know with adults, it's eggs and gas and, you know, other things. I mean, I'm looking at the faces, we know. Starbucks, $8, a tank of gas, four, that's two gallons. Okay? So we got it. We know where we're at. But with you all, just from what you said, with you two, what do you think were some of like those upfront things, those emotional challenges that are out there that we need to be in tune to?
Yeah. I think one really big thing is everything being perceived as cringy, I think, because social media is so prevalent. It's like, at any point, someone can take out their phone, and something embarrassing can happen to you, and it can exist forever. So we're all in this constant cycle of, how am I going to look, or how do I want to look, and how can I maintain this aesthetic or perception people have of me? And a lot of the time, those aren't healthy perceptions, because we're looking at people who are young like ourselves, and they don't have their healthy support system and their proper self-awareness and healthy coping mechanisms. So I might be easily peer pressured into doing something I shouldn't do to, I guess, keep the views up.
Got you.
I would say mostly it's the expectations of going into the future and going into this vast and wide and scary world that has a lot of things that the past generations didn't have to worry about. The increasing use of AI and how that's looking in the job force and the workforce. And also, you know, there aren't as many jobs, there's not as many people hiring, there's a lot of things going on in our political climate. There's just, it can feel like we're being attacked from all fronts, because you have to worry about your in-present, your high school, you know, your grades, you have to worry about your relationship with your friends and your family. And to piggyback off of what my consultant said, social media, it's everywhere, you can't ignore it. It's, there's a lot of things going on at one time, and that can be stressful.
Okay, so Elena, right? Alana? Okay, so what would you say to someone your age who's struggling, but they're kind of afraid to ask for help, but you know they want help?
So I think it takes a lot of courage and strength to find some help. You know, it could be a family member or a friend. If they really love you and care for you, they won't judge you. It's better to talk to somebody about it than keep it inside of you. And honestly, everyone, no one's perfect in here, in this world. We're not meant to go through life alone. If we need help, there's always going to be somebody to reach out. There's websites too, where you could anonymously say something to help you, because there is a lot of resources around us, it's just how we use it. And everyone's scared to do things, but honestly, it's just the matter of fact where you take the first step to do, to help you.
Oh, perfect, perfect. So here's how, you know, I was always taught when I was in something like this, especially when you're with people who have money. And you would say, if I had the million dollars right now, and I could give to each one of you on this panel, to say, is there something, is there a program that we can design for a space where teens can be? What would you include in that program and why? Now, this is, this is a lifelong lesson too. Whenever you're with somebody who can, who's got money, you always go with the ask, but go with the ask and the solution and the plan, so that that individual doesn't have to think about what you're doing. to think about what you're doing. You've already convinced them or the organization that your path is clear. So, again, what would you include in that program, that million dollars you got and why? Start down at the end. Well, you have the mic, go ahead. One spot, bing, 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 go.
So, what I would do with the million dollars for mental health, I would construct a program that would be inclusive of basically creating that safe space. And unlike the more formal and typical buildings with the bright fluorescent lights and all those kind of things, I would kind of make it a hangout spot. And with the million dollars, it can be a very leisurely space that can accommodate a lot of young people. Basically focusing on how to talk to each other. And when you create that kind of leisurely space, it takes away from the stress and formality that kind of holds people back whenever they wanna talk about or communicate the state of their mental health. So with a million dollars, that could be very possible and that would probably, you know, be something that could happen.
Okay.
I would think about bringing back some of the lot of the, there's not a lot of spaces for teens to gather and go and do things together anymore. There's not as many arcades and I honestly can't think of any other examples. But I would start by doing that. I would have, you know, a hangout space as well. But I would fill it with things that teens aren't typically using every day. So it wouldn't be filled with TVs and video games. I would have more board games, maybe an arcade game, a lot of sensory toys, stuff, animals, books, just helping the teens reconnect with some things inside of themselves, because that's important too.
Thank you. With the million dollars, I think I would build an area where they can build, explore their different, different career paths and different passions. I think a lot of us go into college just choosing something random or something our parents chose for us. So we end up kind of in the rat race with a job we don't love and we don't feel passionate about, which once again will bring the underlying mental health issues to the surface. But I think if students get a chance to explore different passions and different workforces, have a chance to be mentors to each other, see mentors in the community, they can really find something they're passionate about that'll not only be profitable for them financially in the future, so they can ha, be financially stable, but also something that'll benefit their community as a whole.
Are we listening with that third ear? You saw that right now, a million dollars don't really mean anything. Because a lot of what they're talking about is space that we already have here in Gwinnett County that we can do things to. And I think that's the point. So I'm gonna open up to the youth in the audience and say, what do, what do any of you all think out there that you wish that we knew more of that would help your generation or your community as it deals with mental health? Any of the youth in the audience, before I point? Okay, there we go.
So, a lot of adults in some of our lives, for example, some parents, like my friend's parents, they don't believe in mental health and they think it's a type of joke or a weakness. But, like, for example, if some, if they were to reach out to their parents, they were, they would be like, um, that's not, that's, you're okay. You know, they invalidate our feelings. And I feel like if more adults were open to us and our mental health and were open, like willingly finding a way to help us, that would make us feel much better, you know, where we wouldn't feel judged to anyone about any, like about what we're feeling to or going through.
Did anybody hear any indications of we needed funding for that? That, that means that we need to be out there in these streets and with these folks. Anybody else, before I point at them? I'm right here. Give him the mic, I'm right here. You thought you was gonna get away?
What was the question again?
That's a good one, that's a good one. What did you wish more of us knew about that space that, that we've been talking about, that safe space that we've been talking about, that we should be more in tune to about mental health? Y'all know I changed it on him, right?
I don't even know for real, like, I have to think about it more. But I think, for me, it's good right now, so.
Okay. So you see that safe space, that area where they can go and think about it, where they can feel comfortable? You know, where, where like-minded people are there because you have like-minded things to do. It's not just one, it's a whole lot of things that they can do in this safe space. So, I'm, I'm, I'm getting it. Trust me, it, it's, it's coming through. So, we, we've heard from our youth. So now it's time to, let's hear what some of our subject matter experts have to say about what we've heard based on some of the questions that I'll push out. So I'll start with Ms., Ms. Amira. So I'm gonna ask, what are some of the warning signs that a young person might show that they're in distress? And what should someone do if they notice those signs?
So, thank you Commissioner again for hosting this.
Can you give us who, who you're from, where you're from again?
My name is Amira Abdul-Hafid. I am the Program Director for Suicide Prevention with Guide, Inc., which is a local nonprofit. We do positive youth development, substance use prevention, as well as suicide prevention work. We, the panelists basically said it right. They have a lot being thrown at them from all different directions with a lot of pressure for the future and everything. So, some things to look out for is just a disinterest in things that they used to love. For example, if they're big into sports and they're suddenly just not going to sports games or their practices, something definitely to look out for. More isolation, more withdrawal. You know, adolescents, they wanna be on their own, they're pulling away from the family, going more towards peers, but it's more of that they're not doing anything, not being involved in anything anymore. So, anything like that, pay attention to what they're, might be drawing. Art is a good kind of convey, conveyorant, if I'm thinking of the right word. Where you might get a picture, so if they're a drawer and they're artists, that could be a way of getting a visual of what they might be going through. But any kind of withdrawal, isolation, drastic change of mood or interests, that kind of thing is something to look out for. And what we always recommend is just sitting down and doing what they're asking, what they're telling us to do now. Listen. And listen without judgment. Yes, we've all been through high school and this and that, but again, not at the same time now as they're going through in 2025. Back in 1999, 2000, when I was in high school, I didn't have Facebook, social media, TikTok, all of that stuff. There was, it's different. What they're, what they're facing now is different. And we need to sit down and be quiet and listen and see what they're saying. And be that safe space.
Perfect. So, Ms. Jackson, as a parent, how have you supported your daughter's mental health journey? And what should you share with other caregivers who might feel unsure where to start?
Thank you, Commissioner. Being a parent to a child who has had anxiety and depression and being a daughter of a mother who was bipolar, I have always known what it looks like. So what I would share with anyone is to first, always pay attention to the signs, as she has mentioned, and to always be open and to always make sure that there's no judgment. I've always tried to create a safe space for my daughter. I've always made sure that she knew that I'm always listening, I'm always supporting and I'm always there. That I will always choose her. And when I say that, anything that she shares with me, if there was any situations that arise with trauma, with family members or anything like that, that I'm always going to choose her. And that anything that she's feeling, anything that she's going through, it's not a reflection of who she is, it's what she is dealing with. So that I always wanted to make sure that she felt encouraged and that she felt supported and that was always very important to me. Because sometimes people that are dealing with any type of mental illness crisis, they always feel like there's something wrong with them. It's my fault, I did something wrong, I'm not a good person, or, you know, I'm suffering and I'm causing you some type of harm, or I'm causing you some type of pain, or I'm making something worse for you. It was always important that she knew that that was not the case and that I was always gonna be there to support her. So my advice to any parent or anyone that is raising a child is just always make sure that they know that they are loved and that they're supported and that there's help for them. I've always tried to be very intentional about the village that I created around her, the friends, the family, the people that were gonna be in her life. I've always made sure that she knew to advocate for herself, to always never be ashamed of the fact that she was having anxiety or depression, that's why she's able to sit on that panel with you and be able to talk about what she's dealing with, because there's nothing to be embarrassed or ashamed of. And I would encourage other parents to make sure that they made their, their child feel that way as well.
Okay, so here's something that I just took away from that, that maybe you can help me with, with our lawmakers and our legislators. Did you hear me transition that from parent to caregiver? See, you're no longer a parent in the sense of, yes, that's your biological child and everything, but now you've transitioned into the world of caregiving. Because now you're providing something else that's extra than what you would as a parent. So when we talk with our lawmakers, we wanna make sure that if there is any type of legislation that comes out about caregiving, that in that legislation should be embedded about parents and youth that help other people in this mental health space. It's lacking. And that's, to me, is ground level stuff, y'all. When you start at that level. And then we can start to look at, is there some type of compensation that can be placed on that caregiver that's helping in these situations, whether they be teen to teen peer counseling or parent to child? I mean, it's important just to think about it. So, Ms. Mitchum, Hope Dealer Does Great, Deep Grasswork, excuse me, Grassroot Work. What message would you want to give to the youth, especially those challenges that are, that are dealing with silence? And how do you think you would push that messaging to them?
Well, I would say to every young person, and actually, every person out here who feels like they're drowning in silence, I need you to know one thing. You are not broken beyond repair. You're not. Struggling does not make you weak, it makes you human. The world might tell you to be strong and suck it up, tough it out, but real strength is reaching out. And it's really important for everyone to know, real strength is reaching out before you can't anymore. There are hands ready to pull you out of the dark. I mean, everyone here, all of these organizations. Don't believe the lie that you're better off invisible. Because the truth is, this world needs you in it exactly how you are. And exactly how you are becoming.
Thank you. We had a great.
I just hate to see them suffer.
I got you.
And what was the second part?
That was it, that was it. That was it. You, you, you hit it, that was it. So, Irene, how does early trauma show up in teens emotionally and behaviorally?
To start off, my name's Irene Batista, I'm with the Viewpoint Health at the Centerville Program in, in Sunnellville. We're a pretty new program, but we're, we're servicing exactly the population that we're talking about today, right? But zero to 17, to be specific, so we're servicing all the way from newborn infants all the way till, you know, you guys are finishing up high school. And what we're really seeing and what we see with youth mental health is a lot of what we've been talking about today, right? A lot of these issues are systemic, like Commissioner Watkins was talking about, right? It starts with all of us and what we're doing to support. So what we're seeing is, you know, impacts on attachment styles, right? We're seeing changes in relationships, the ability of our youth to be able to have fruitful and healthy relationships with their peers, with their parents, with other members of, of our community, right? We're seeing changes with physical health. So, we're having impacts on, on what physical health resources we're using, right? Changes in immune system. We're seeing changes in, in ability to manage stress. We're also seeing a lot of emotional impact, right? We're seeing kids who are struggling with navigating that stress, you know, the reactions that they have. Also, all that, this anger and irritability, the irritability that we see with the youth, it's stemming from a lot of these mental health issues and these traumas that they're experiencing not only at home, from caregivers who themselves have experienced trauma. So we're seeing a lot of intergenerational issues that are coming into the picture, but also the, the trauma that's coming in from the community itself, right? So, you know, we see impacts in all aspects of, of their life, really.
So, this, this thing that now we do, did, how many of you all know in Gwinnett County that we have one of the best play therapy and play therapists in the country? Did you know that? Right here in, in Gwinnett County? Premier. Well, since they don't, let them know. I did not know about play therapy. I just told my kids, go somewhere and play. But there's actually a therapy to that. So let us know.
Right, right, exactly. What Commissioner Watkins is saying is, well, at Centerville, if you guys aren't aware, we are, at Viewpoint Health, it's the only CSB in the state of Georgia that has that play therapy certification, so that we're able to provide these services. And specifically, our director, Gloria Julio, she really had this vision when we were opening up this center last year, that we need to support the youth. That, that always has been her mission. And she brought us all in, you know, all of our team, who is really, really passionate about youth, youth mental health. And we're, we opened up this space with the focus of play, right? And play can sound like it is for young children, right? And for the majority of the part, it is, right? That's our main service space. But play is for everybody. And we wanna make sure that we're creating this space for people to come in and do it in a safe space, like you were talking about. And so we're seeing, not, not only servicing the children, right? Infants is one of our big populations in a new project here in Georgia, but specifically for Gwinnett and for us, is to be able to provide these services to young mothers who are coming in with a lot of trauma. Because it's not only the children, but it's really a systemic issue, right? Where we have to service the whole family. We can't just provide the services to the young children, but to, to the whole system that is supporting this child. Because as Iliana was saying, right, like, we, we have to get the buy-in from everybody, but also support the parents who themselves are having these issues that if we are able to support the parent, how much more fruitful can the therapy be for, for the youth, right? So, a lot of our program is, we're doing a lot of things like video game therapy, which is pretty new to the play therapy field itself, because it is already something that the youth already do, right? So how can we bring that in? How can we bring in the stuff that is already here to support them, right? So we're bringing in all these different modalities to kind of support what they already like to do, to support the issues that they're having.
Right, yeah, I can think, when you think of, when I think of play therapy, I know all of us who went to school, spades, when you first got to college, was play therapy. I see people smiling. That was, that was play therapy. You kind of took your mind off of, I'm, I'm away from home my first time. So you get with like-minded people and spades and then you graduated to Big Wiz. There was a hierarchy of gaming. So, with that, with our Gwinnett Coalition, from a countrywide, from a county-wide perspective, Dr. Hervey, what partnerships and tools are showing real promise when it comes to improving youth mental health outcomes in Gwinnett County?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Watkins. I'm Shannon Hervey, Director of Community Health for the Gwinnett Coalition. That is actually a very complex question. Irene just mentioned that trauma can be multi-generational. And so, to me, it's difficult to have a conversation about how we improve the mental health outcomes for youth, unless we're also willing to include in that conversation, how do we improve the mental health outcomes for adults that interface with youth? And so, there's an old African proverb that goes, if you wanna go fast...
And so there's an old African proverb that goes, if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together. And so this solving of the problem of improving mental health outcomes for youth is not going to be a fast solution. So we have no other choice but to do it collaboratively. And that's really where Resilient Gwinnett comes in. Resilient Gwinnett is a program that is sponsored by the Gwinnett Coalition, where we have prioritized mental and behavioral health outcomes for youth as well as for adults. But we don't do it by ourselves. You all may, I may kind of age myself here, but you all remember the R and B singer Neo? The kids are looking at me like, who? But no, Neo used to say, I'm a force by my, I'm a movement by myself, but I'm a force when we're together. And that's really how I think of Resilient Gwinnett. We don't do this work alone. We align ourselves with other organizations and agencies that also have a goal to eradicate or prevent adverse childhood experiences, to really promote positive childhood experiences, and then to practice trauma-informed principles. And so many of the organizations that we partner with are actually in this room, and I want to mention them by name. And when I do, if you would, just raise your hand. And so we have Guide, we have Viewpoint Health, Gwinnett County, Gwinnett County Public Schools, Gwinnett Newton Rockdale Public Health, Surfamilia, Mosaic, Georgia, Rice, Gwinnett County DFAX, Juvenile Court, and so on and so forth. We actually have informal partnerships with more than 70 agencies that are here, because we can't do this work alone. So we align ourselves with those that say, come and join us. And that's how we're really going to be able to effectuate change.
Okay, well, let's see. Now, 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 we have heard from our subject matter experts, and I mean, that's a wealth of knowledge and takeaway. But see, now we're gonna come back to the whole reason why we've been here this morning and as to our panelists. So after hearing, and most of you kind of already know what a lot of them do, but for still, what, in what way do you feel that what you just heard from these organizations, do you feel that we're moving toward that right direction when it comes to mental health? And then the second part of that question would be, what is one takeaway that you would want to give to those watching or those in the audience today? You would want them to walk away from here within their minds?
After hearing what they just said of the organizations that we're partnering with, I do feel like we're moving in the right direction. And I also feel a more stronger sense of motivation to make an impact around, for the people around me. And one thing I would like the audience or the people watching to have in mind is that you matter and mental health isn't a sign of weakness. To reiterate, it's not a sign of weakness, because I really resonated with that. It's something that's important and I think should be valued in our spaces.
After listening to everyone speak, I want to say that I feel, I feel very seen and I feel very respected. And that's always a great feeling. And one takeaway I'd like to leave with the audience is just a reminder that no matter what you're going through, no matter what mental issues you may have, that not only will you survive it, but you will thrive with it. And always remember that.
Just to grow on a way, they said as well, your mental health is just as important as your physical health, and we all get sick. It could be something small like the flu or something that could be completely taking you over like cancer. But no one would ever come out and talk about their physical illness, and it'd be perceived in a negative way. So it's just important to have that community and that support group to be able to validate the way you're feeling and recognize the importance of your mental health.
So as you can see, it still takes a village. I don't care what no one says, it still takes a village. I mean, we all have to be in this together. Not just from the policymaker and the law enforcement part of it, but also as a community and as community advocates as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Deborah, and we'll have questions from the audience, because I think we have the right folks here who can answer.
Correct. So remember, one question per person, so we can get to everybody. And because we started just a little late, we will go to 11:40. So ask away. We also have some subject matter experts in the audience as well. We have Major Trichita Maldonado, the commander of the GCSU Mental Health Task Force. And we have Ms. Tekeisha Smith with P H C Consult, all licensed therapists. This is what they do. So ask away. Anyone can jump in and answer the questions.
Or as they say in the military, I can point.
Do you guys offer any specific free resources or do like collaborations with schools?
So we have been slowly but surely training school staff in how to help a youth with mental health challenges, along with their school policy, of course. But we have been trying to provide some resources. We have wellness workbooks. We have panic, anxiety, stress support cards, which are on our table, which are portable that you can take with you. Also sensory stickers, which are now like the the big thing, the trending thing with a QR code on it that leads to our webpage that has a lot of mental health resources. So that's some of the services that we do. I recently got trained in a curriculum to offer teen mental health first aid. So we're gonna try to introduce that to our youth advisory board, where we can train teenagers like yourself on how to be able to help your peers going through a mental health challenge. So that's some of the things that we do at Guide.
Someone from the school.
Were you about to say something, Shannon, and talk about?
Go ahead. You do it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good morning. I'm Tanisha Parker. I'm the Executive Director of Student Services for Gwinnett County Public Schools. I'm also a licensed clinician as well. And we support our 500 counselors, our 50 social workers, 20 nurses, and we've got about 25 to 30 outside clinicians. Viewpoint is one of the organizations that we have clinicians that serve our students with acute mental health needs. We also partner with an organization called Stepping Stone for those acute needs and for clinicians to push into the building. Regarding, and do you remember me? We met at your G S L T.
Yeah.
Okay. The second part of your question, I guess it was around free resources or whatnot. And we do partner with our schools and we, with our community agencies and promote some of the trainings that they're doing, which is how they get some of those teachers into those programs around youth mental health first aid. They have a new one called Teen Mental Health, and I'm really excited about them rolling out. And so our counselors and social workers, they all have the the formal training in mental health, but we are always looking for additional strategies and resources to support their clinical knowledge as well. And what you guys should also be familiar with, hopefully, is that we went to every single school in the district, being a PBIS school that was under my department's direction. And so a PBIS school really focuses on culture and climate in the building. And it gets to, one of you amazing young people said this earlier about, and I wrote your name down, but I think it was you in the middle, that said, it's about building a network, or maybe it was it was one of the young ladies, about building a network of positive people around you, so that when negative things do happen, you have that resource that you can rely on. And so PBIS is about building that positive culture in that safe space that you guys have been talking about, not only in the classroom, but in the building. And so that's been a requirement for all of our schools for the past two years, which it was not prior to. In addition to that, we teach some of those, one of you said, communication skills, how to just talk to each other, how to agreeably disagree, because we're going to, in your advisement classes, and I know there's probably some areas where we want to push in and make sure those advisement lessons are being provided. But there are advisement lessons specifically on anxiety, stress, depression. So cutting, so that we make sure that students, before they even present, and these are global global strategies, meaning everybody in the building should be getting that, not only the kids that are presenting with either an outward behavioral outward behavioral display or an inward behavioral display. And some of those behaviors can be disruptive, and some of them are destructive. They're not disruptive. They're not causing a commotion in the classroom, but the kid is internally being impacted by that. So there are a number of things that we're doing. We have a lot of work to do. My department, which is over the mental health component for the district, is about four, five years old. And so we have, we still have a lot of work to do, but I'm deeply, deeply, deeply tied to the work. My brother passed away of suicide. He was a senior at Shiloh High School in the year of 2001. And literally since that, I have dedicated my life to supporting youth in their mental health needs. So we have a lot of partnerships with a lot of amazing organizations in here.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, and I really shouldn't because she did a great job, but our partnership in working with the school system, as well as Georgia Center for Child Advocacy and Guide, as well as Viewpoint, we're allowed to be able to offer free trainings. So that being a huge resource in our community, teen mental health first aid being one of the newest ones, but also bounce, which helps to teach those skills around well-being, as well as how youth can build resiliency, offered by the Georgia Center for Child Advocacy.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kenneth Green. I actually serve on the Gwinnett County Airport Board Authority under Jasper Watkins. My question is, how do we help our youth with social anxiety in Gwinnett County Public Schools? I have a young daughter. I think she's dealing with that as well, but I think that's very important right now.
You said for social?
Social anxiety.
Social anxiety.
Oh, great. So at our school, I go to Archer, by the way, I think a lot of the students do struggle with that, especially because, like I said before, a lot of things are perceived as cringe and not cool. And that transition from middle school to high school can be a really harsh one, especially at a school like Archer, where we have classes of around 800 students. So there are a lot of kids. But one thing I would suggest to her is to just join a lot of different clubs and extracurriculars, because you only have seven class periods. If you are in all seven class periods and you don't really find anybody who you click with, who you can genuinely connect with, if you find an extracurricular that is specifically honed into your hobbies and your interests or values or morals, then you'll have a much higher chance of finding a long-term friend. And then from there, you can develop the social skills you need to network and communicate a little better around the school.
I just want to add to that. I think it can be very helpful if you know you have a child that is struggling with social anxiety, would be just taking them out into the world, so they can see how you interact with people, so they can see that they have something to piggyback off of. They have an example that I think they can look forward to. And I think that can be very important and helpful.
And also, for if you have a individual, a child that is struggling with social anxiety, just the best you can do is not surround them by, with, make sure they're not surrounded by any over criticizing. Just like how he said with social media. Social media provides a space where people can easily criticize and they just have access to that. So just in person, not being, not being surrounded by over criticism would be a really good addatory.
Yeah, because see, I can tell you right now, with the, I, with the anxiety and thing, I just, for grins and giggles, I went to Chat G P T, put my picture in and some little things about myself and said, would you like him? And Chat G P T says, probably not. He does this. And if not, if I was an emotional person, I'd be like, oh, my gosh, the electronics said they don't like me. And then it spirals down like that. So, I mean, sometimes, I laugh about it now, but imagine if someone's searching and looking to identify themselves, and they go to something like that to put in something about themselves, and it tells them something totally different. These things are out there. So.
Struggling with with any, any issue. The schools don't inherently know this. Someone has to inform the school about this, or a behavior or concern has to be observed. And and a particular quiet kid, particularly if it's at one of those transition years, moving into ninth grade or moving into sixth grade, where the school may not yet fully know your student, they may not know that that is a behavior that we need to be watching, or that we need to try to pull this kid into the fold a little more. So if you're a parent and you are aware and something's different with your child, absolutely let your teacher know, reach out to the counselor, let some adult in the building be aware, whether it's an administrator, the actual students, your actual student's teacher or the counselor, be aware so that they can check in on your kid around the, one of you said the amazing point around clubs. That's a great idea. But even if that club that your kid wants to be a part of doesn't exist, they can share that desire with a counselor or a teacher. They may be aware of other kids who are really interested in, I don't know, sewing. Maybe we don't have a sewing club, but they know about two or three other kids that have also wanted to do that. They can create, as long as you have a teacher sponsor, a new club interest for for that student. But clubs and activities are a great way. But sometimes students don't see themselves in the clubs or activities that already exist. I mean, they may have a different passion. And so giving, and again, that safe space, the the counselor or the teacher or someone, helping make them aware of that student's need for, hey, just, if you just reach out to them and check in on them or inquire, what do you like to do? That creates an opportunity for at least the school to know some of the things about a student that maybe we can, we can harvest and create something for them where they do feel more connected to the school. And invite other people that would be a part of that. So maybe they create their own social circle.
Dr. Parker, there is often the misconception, at least from the old generation school of thought, that if counselors or someone in the school knows your child may struggle with something, then they'll be labeled. And some parents are afraid to even express, hey, my child has ADHD. My child suffers from anxiety. Could you kind of rest those fears for folks?
And and the people in the building that are supposed to be helping your children can't do that if we don't know. Like, we, we have to, we have to just say that. We don't, we can't help if we don't know. School counselors are not there for a specific group of kids. School counselors are there for every single kid, and they support every single kid. So every single kid, and and it's a lot of them in our buildings, which may promote some of that social anxiety, because we have big schools. Gwinnett County has really, really big schools. But your school counselor is designed, their work is designed to support every single student. So some of it is just skill building, right? Some of it is intervention when we know that students need additional help. And all of it, and I think you, amazing people said again, mental health and and being, having anxiety or being depressed, those are all normal things. The thing that's not normal is staying there. When you don't have the skills to move yourself out of those positions, or if you don't have the the network around you to help move you out, that's the part that becomes problematic. Not being sad, not not being really upset about something. We are people, and you're gonna have the range of emotions. That is very normal. And so normalizing the range of emotions is part of what our school counselors do when we push into classrooms, and we have our lessons that every single kid gets. So it's not that, oh, you went to go see the counselor. There must be something wrong with you. Every single kid should be seeing their counselor at some point during the school year, or that counselor is pushing out to see them. So the stigma, we're hoping, starts to diminish, because every single kid, it's our, it's our, under our roof, under our supervision, should be supported. Whether it's a skill building, which every single kid gets, or an intervention, which maybe some kids need. But regardless, we're going to do whatever that kid needs to get them to the next step.
Hi, I am a parent of this young man here, and he's involved in two of the groups that are represented here. I have a question for the board. When I was growing up, we had third spaces. We went to the skating rink. We went to the mall. We went to the football games. We went to Applebee's. We went to the movies. What activities are kids your age doing? What activities are kids your age doing that are non-school related, that are non anything, you just show up and you are yourself and you let your hair down with your friends? Where are you all congregating? And do you need more of that?
I'll just start it off. I definitely think we need more of that. There is not enough spaces for teens to congregate with just teens. And even the spaces that we do have now currently, they're becoming increasingly unsafe. And, you know, you don't want to go to those places as much anymore. I can just speak, both me and my friends, we mainly meet up and we go get something to eat. We go get ice cream and just go to the park and just sit and talk.
Well, great minds think alike. So I do think we definitely need more of those spaces. But for me, as an academic-based person, I feel like I find fun in those extracurricular spaces and also even in those academic spaces we create outside of school. Because the goal as a high schooler right now is to go to college. So instead of deviating or seeing school as a, not a place where you can't emotionally connect with people, it's kind of like, it coexists with me and my circle of people. But if an individual isn't more academic focused or like maybe that's not what they want in life, there definitely needs to be more spaces outside of school-related things. Because if you want to go to the mall, you could be scared of mall shooter or things like that. But that kind of fear lingers around in those public spaces that used to be available.
My situation is kind of similar to hers. At our school, like she previously mentioned, anybody with enough passion and a sponsor can start a club. So we have game clubs, we have, or like board game clubs, we have video game clubs. I just, I started a computer science club because that was something me and all of my friends wanted to do. Even last year, we were like, you know what, guys? We're bored, we don't have anything better to do. And we all joined tennis and, so I'm doing varsity tennis again. But we just pick stuff, something up when we're bored. It's like there's always a community of people who are passionate about what they do. And maybe if you join a book club and you're not that into reading, their passion may affect you and you might also become very interested in that as well. But I definitely do agree that we do need more third spaces, especially because, like she said before, I don't think the biggest issue is that they don't exist, is it's that now they're very, very expensive and they're very dangerous. It's like going to the movies will cost you $20 for just the ticket. So it's kind of hard to consistently recharge your social battery and hang, and hang out with other people instead of sitting inside all day.
So how many, how many of y'all remember in the neighborhood y'all had that house? Right? See? It takes a village. We got to go back to that, y'all, because my, my grandmother's house was that house. We looked like she fed the whole neighborhood and everybody came, you know, play cards or checkers or talked and stuff. But that was kind of like a safe space in the neighborhood where you live. And I think what, what we're hearing is, we need more of those kinds of spaces inside. And I still haven't heard they need a million dollars yet. So we're good. We're working toward, building a budget. I'm building a budget, trying to figure out what we're going to do.
Hi, my name's Frederico Robertson and I started a nonprofit in June, the Marquise Bernard Broughton Foundation Incorporated, because I lost my son in April to fentanyl. But some of the questions that I think of now, how I could have changed it. One question, this is for the panel. If I could, if you could give parents one place, one piece of advice to help us stay connected to our teens in this digital and fast-paced world, what would it be?
So one thing, a lot of, one thing I want to say is you really don't want to allow them to struggle in silence, especially with, you know, us having such large schools in Gwinnett, because if I'm someone who's very introverted and I don't have many friends, it'll make it a lot easier for dangerous teenagers my age to prey upon me and introduce me to things like dangerous drugs. Because once again, a lot of the times, it's not some scary middle-aged man who's sneaking into the school and offering you drugs, drugs to your kids. It is other teenagers who have made bad decisions with their life and they're now looking to prey upon other kids their age to pull them into these dangerous activities. So when you notice, hey, my kid is oversleeping and they don't like going to school, you might want to ask them why, you know, how come you're not going to school as much? What is it that you specifically don't enjoy about school? If they don't have many friends or aren't going out, try to push them to more recreational events where they can meet people who are safe and genuine and don't have any bad intentions.
And also you said, like, how would you be able to connect with your kid in a world that's moving faster and faster? I feel like with a kid that might be struggling with substances or maybe they weren't struggling with it, just one full day with them without any advice. Because like I reiterated before, like, people don't usually need, always need a voice of reason. Of course, at times they might need that, but it's easier to connect with somebody when you're not talking logistics. And I think that in the future, we could all, you know, connect with each other better by just listening. And I'm very sorry for your loss.
One thing that my mom had always done is she made it a rule to never lie to me. So growing up, there was always this safe space of connection and communication. And even when I got older and entered high school and I was introduced to drugs and other things that were just new for me, I was, I always felt like I could go to my mom and ask questions or if I felt unsafe, like, hey, mom, come pick me up. Like they're doing stuff that I don't want to come do, come get me. And I wasn't worried about, oh, I'm going to be in trouble or she's going to be disappointed in me. And she might have been, or I might have gotten in trouble, but that wasn't my main focus because I trusted my mom.
And I think it was your mom that said, what you're struggling with is not a reflection of who you are, it is simply what you are struggling with. And that really spoke volumes to me because in schools, we will, in my school, we would see like bathrooms locked up before they say, hey, come talk to us. You're not going to get expelled. We just want to help you. You're not going to get the worst punishment and get your future ruined. We just simply want to talk to you. We want to know what you're struggling with because that's not a reflection of who you are and it shouldn't forever be a reflection of who you are. It should just be, we as your school, we as your staff, we as your teachers, we as your counselors, we want to know what you're dealing with. We're not going to lock the bathrooms up before we even say, come talk to us. No.
For me, me and my mom, we're really close because, for example, every Friday after school, we would go to Chick-fil-A and we would just set our phones aside and just talk, just hanging out with, you know, my parents. I love doing that and we're so, we're really close because we do that. Now every Sundays after church, we go out to eat and we just talk about what happened through our week at school, for them, you know, from work. And from, I feel like that just personally helped me have emotional connection with them. And just, they hear me talk about how my life is right now, what's going on. And honestly, I feel like that's what's really helped me and my parents' connection.
All right, well, everyone, give our panelists, give our subject matter experts, the audience on the roll a hand and give yourselves a hand for being here. Because again, this is a tough conversation to have, but it had to be had. If you're on Facebook watching us today and you have some questions, leave them in the comment section. We'll get someone to answer them within the next 24 to 48 hours. Thank you so much for joining us for the Mental Health and Me Town Hall. Y'all, give it up for Commissioner Watkins. Have a wonderful Saturday, have a wonderful weekend. God bless.